Call the January sixth, two thousand and fifteen regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P M. Would Councilmember Christianson lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, your honor. Councilman Rich Guard.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilwoman Mary Ellen Christianson.
Present.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Mayor Ron Warpinus.
And I am present. Thank you. I declare that we have a quorum this evening. Would the chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Your honor, I have moved to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second. It is our discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, your honor. Approval of the minutes, December sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, January fifth, two thousand and fifteen, finance committee meeting. Approval of finance committee recommendations for January sixth, two thousand and fifteen.
Your honor? Yes. Councilman Fabian.
It's the recommendation of the finance committee for claims to be paid in the amount of two million, forty-five thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and ten cents. Checks for payroll and liabilities for December eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Annual checks in the amount of ten thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars, for a total of two million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-two cents. And that does include a payoff of a loan, so that's why it's a little bigger this time.
Okay. Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda.
Your honor, I would move to approve consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second. It is our discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number seven is the fiscal year fourteen annual audit report, presentation by Mater, Tasher, and Company.
Your honor, Dennis, are you with us?
Yeah.
Okay.
I am, of course.
Your honor, it's pronounced Mater Chocker and Peterson.
Okay.
And telephonically, we have Dennis Chocker, who is the leading auditor on this, on our audit. He's been with us for about four years now.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Courtney. Mayor, council members. The purpose of an audit is to ensure that the financial statements are prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and that there are no material misstatements. Secondly, it's to test and make sure that the city has a proper system of internal controls in place so that we don't have one person taking one transaction from start to finish. So if we look on page one, two, and three of the report, this is auditor's report on the financial statement. It is a unmodified report. It's a clean report. It's the best you can have. Basically says you are preparing your financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. If you look on pages four through thirteen, this is the management discussion and analysis, which is kind of a narrative of the city's accomplishments and financial information for fiscal year two thousand and fourteen. I would encourage the council members to read through that. It is probably a little easier in some respects than the financial statements themselves. And your staff do take a lot of time in preparing this, so it's well put together. I'd encourage you to take a look at that. If we look on page seventeen, this is the balance sheet of the city of Riverton. And as we can see towards the bottom there, the, for the governmental fund, the net worth is eight million, four hundred thousand, which is about a million, nine percent increase over the prior year. This is basically if you were for a for-profit, this is net worth. It's assets minus liabilities. So it's a strong financial position that the city is in. So that's a good reflection on the council and the staff as well. Page twenty-one, you can see the balance sheet for your utility funds, your water, sewer, sanitation, airport. And again, you show on page twenty-two, your net position, forty-five million. That's a very strong position to be in. Your assets minus liabilities leaves you forty-five million. So again, it's a very strong financial situation. Page twenty-three, we can look and see that the, this is basically the income statement for the utility funds. And you can see the, oh, about the third line up from the bottom, your net position is two million, six hundred thousand. That would be the net profit. But I would like to point out that right above that, excuse me, three million, one hundred and ninety thousand of that profit came from capital grants. So that was spent primarily fixed assets. And so if you take that out of the picture, you'd show a slight loss. But I'd just like to point that out. So if someone looks at that and says, my God, we made two point six million, you back out the capital grants out of that. It would have been a slight loss, which means the general fund is recording, subsidizing some of the utility funds, which is fine. The other report, well, if we look on page forty-four, this is the budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund. And you can see under your expenditures, the city did a good job of staying under their budget. So there's no state statute violations of overspending in that area. And that's a direct reflection on your staff and monitoring the budgets and making sure the departments stay within the budget. So again, a positive reflection on the city. If we look on pages, let's go to the back, there's, there are two other reports that's part of the audit where we talk about internal control, compliance matters. Page fifty-four, if you look under the compliance and other matters, the last sentence, "The tests of our results disclose no instances of noncompliance that need to be reported under government auditing standards." What that means is the city has done a good job of staying, operating within the statute and law and not violating any statute. So again, that's a good reflection on, on the council and the staff. Page fifty-six relates to your federal money that you receive. Page fifty-six at the top, the city of Riverton complied in all material respect with the types of compliance requirements referred to above. What that means is as far as your federal money is concerned, you complied with all of the requirements and spent the money according to those requirements. So again, a very positive report. So it's, like I say, it's a clean audit report. We don't make very many journal entries. The council has given financial information on a monthly basis. It can be relied upon. The journal entries, a few journal entries we do make are given to us by your staff. So it's mainly converting your cash basis to financial statements to these accrual basis financial statements. So again, a clean report. I'd just like the council to know that we always have the full cooperation of your staff. They're a good bunch to work with. And we appreciate that. It allows us to come in, conduct the audit, and get out, excuse me, in a timely fashion, hopefully without too much disruption to their daily routines. So when we ask for information, they're giving it to us timely. And that's greatly appreciated by us, by our auditors. That's kind of a quick overview. If any council members had any questions, try to answer those. I also would encourage, if any of you council members ever have questions regarding the audit or accounting, certainly we're available for one-on-one conversations with you and encourage you to call us. We do have a lot of conversations with your staff during the year, which helps us keep abreast of what's going on with the, with the city and can work through accounting issues together. So at the end of the year, we don't have any issues. So I would encourage any of you that want to do that to do that if you so desire. So with that, Courtney, if anyone would have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Any of the council members have any questions that they would like to ask at this time? Doesn't appear to be. Looks like you've done a good job, Dennis.
Well, your staff has done a great job.
I agree. I agree.
So, so if the council approves the audit report, Courtney, we'll take care of the mailing and then we'll get the data collection form put together for you. Okay.
We're just, we're just getting ready to consider that audit report presentation. So I feel fairly confident that it will get a thumbs up. So we can.
And get that filed and be done for another year, huh?
Okay. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to accept the fiscal year fourteen annual audit report?
Your honor, I would move to approve the audit report.
Second.
It's been moved in second. It is our discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Mayor votes aye. And it does pass. So we're in good shape. Thank you very much, Courtney, for all of your work and the staff. It's, leaving office with a, with a good audit report is wonderful. It's, it really is. Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Motion passed. At this time, is there anything else, Dennis?
No, that's all I have. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Okay. Bye-bye.
At this time, we will have a council members roundtable. And basically what we're doing is just, this council is coming to close as we would at the end of the meeting. And so we'll have our roundtable now. And then after we have the swearing-in ceremony, then Mayor-elect Baker will come up with his new council. And we'll have the continuing meeting. And then they will have their roundtable, I presume, at the end of that meeting. So it's a little different, but this is a little different meeting as well. So, but we'll have our council roundtable at this time. Councilman Larson, would you like to lead off, please?
Thank you, mayor. All I would like to say is I watched the construction of the recreational department's, of an ice rink up at the football field. And they did a great job. The attendance has been good. The, there's skates to rent there. The ice is marvelous. And some nights it's lit, some nights it's not. But I feel that that's a great opportunity for us to have skating in our area on such a magnitude. And I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fabian?
Just would like to say that I've enjoyed serving on the council with all of you. And as you get to move on to a new phase in your, in your life slash political life, I wish you the best. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Christianson?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank everyone I was on the council with. It's been a pleasure. I'd like to thank the citizens that took the opportunity to vote for me four, four years ago. I'd really like to thank the city staff for all the help that they've given me. With, without them, I guarantee you, no one could do this job. And they are very beneficial. They, they give us all the information. I don't know if there'd be that many hours in the week to gather all the information that they give us every meeting. So thanks to all of them. To the, from the sanitation drivers that let me ride around with them to whoever, it's to the police officers that let me ride around with them. It's been a pleasure. So it is, it's just been a great opportunity for, for me to increase my knowledge of this community and just to simply become a better citizen for Riverton, just more responsible. You see all different sides of things that you might not have considered before. So I'd encourage anyone to take the opportunity to participate in this process. It can be done. I know it was frightening. If you think you can't do it, yes, you can. Alls you have to do is love Riverton, Wyoming. And you can do it. So anyone should be involved, given a chance to be involved in this process. There is still time. So anybody in Ward Two, please take that opportunity. Got another week. So I would encourage anyone to do it. It has been an honor to be appointed the council president. And mayor's given me a few opportunities to get up there and try to polish those skills. It's, it was kind of tough a couple of times, but I do appreciate that. That was a, that was a great honor. So thank you. I have enjoyed myself thoroughly and learned a lot. Thank you.
Councilman Canaan?
Sir, I just want to echo the comments again. I appreciate the privilege to work with you, Councilwoman Christianson, Councilman Guard. And I appreciate the opportunity to do that. For your service.
Thank you. Councilman Guard?
Thank you, mayor. I would like to thank the people of my ward that let me represent them for four years. I appreciate it. Enjoyed it immensely. Enjoyed working with the city's staff and wish all well. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to have my comments. And I wished I could be that brief. But I've, in fact, as I was leaving my home this evening, my, my wife suggested that I just say, "Good evening. Thank you. Goodbye." I'm sorry, I can't. There's just been too many people that have done too many things these last four years, including this council. And I would be very remiss if I didn't try to expand on it a little bit and let the community know what we've been doing and whatnot. So those of you that have followed me know that I like to have prepared remarks so that I can be held accountable for them and that you don't have to read between the lines to know what I'm thinking. So as this is my last opportunity as mayor to comment on these last four years, I hope that you will bear with me, as these comments are longer than I had initially intended. First of all, I cannot tell you what a great personal honor it has been for me to be your mayor these last four years. The thing I've appreciated the most has been the opportunity to meet and enjoy the many different personalities that make a community and state what it is. It is impossible to read or hear from someone how it all comes together. Having the firsthand knowledge of what it takes for a city like Riverton to keep operating in the splendid fashion that it does is truly a remarkable thing. When I took office in two thousand and eleven, our city administrator, Carter Napier, was making plans on leaving. Water lines were breaking at the nursing home and our snow budget was way into the red. You remember that, Courtney? After Carter left, we hired John Derrington, interim administrator, who helped us with an extensive job search to find our current administrator, Stephen Weaver. Mr. Weaver has been an outstanding administrator and has been very involved in the many successes we've had. While my part in these successes may have been small, they did happen on my watch. And so I'm going to proudly claim them as my own. I'm sure there are some that will point out my failures as well. Some of these successes include, but are not limited to, construction and funding of the Job Corps, which is nearing completion at this time. When I took office, there was a serious question if the Job Corps was even going to be funded. Passage of our one percent optional tax that has been such a blessing for our roads and their repair did not come easy and required a lot of time and effort on the part of many. Stephen and I did a lot of speeches to various groups around town. Is that right, Stephen? And we were successful. As a part of that success, we created the Fix Our Roads Citizen Committee Force, which has been doing a magnificent job directing the spending of those funds under the co-chairmanship of Wendell Manca and Garland Samuelson. Construction and placing of lines of the two million gallon water tank on Griffey Hill will allow for Job Corps needs and future growth. The construction of the DCI building at the airport. The creation of the Solutions Committee to help deal with alcohol problems. Thank you, chief. That was a wonderful project. The extension of North Broadway to Webbwood Road. Volunteers of America taking over our Crisis Center, which is now the Center of Hope, was a real blessing. Reconstruction of Riverview Road and the rebuild of South Federal were both very expensive and occupied a vast amount of staff time in the building department area and the engineering area. This took a lot of time. Creation of the Airport Task Force that is working tirelessly to solve that very important problem in our community and get us the air service that we need. Our latest success was the gaining of the eighty-five acres of Honor Farm property north of Walmart. This is something I am especially proud of, as the city has been working on this for over ten years. With the approval of the State Lands and Investment Board, SLIB, we are assured of at least eighty-five acres with the possibility of the other two hundred and seventeen acres coming into private hands for future development of Riverton. Millions of dollars of grants, permits, water line repair, sewer line repair, and all the rest, including a police department that is second to none. And a court system we can all be proud of, along with the day-by-day work of billing, solid waste, garbage collection, maintenance. We also had chickens, weeds, and sometimes dealing with a process that would cry, would cause a saint to cry. It's amazing sometimes that we get anything done. But each of these successes, operations, and organizations has their own backstories and a great deal of hard work by many people that you will never read about in the news that work for you. There have also been some hurts that I will never forget. Some private, some public. Perhaps the greatest of these was the untimely death of Bill Urbicay. Bill was a good friend, a loyal employee, and a strong advocate for Riverton. He will be missed for a long time. In many of the successes I have listed above, Bill had a very large hand in. As I look back, I think what I am the proudest of is the fact that we have been honest, transparent, and fair in our dealings. Sometimes the city is given a Hobson's Choice, which makes it difficult. And from the outside, it may not seem that we are being fair or honest. Our integrity, however, is best exemplified by the fact that we did not have any lawsuits or pending legal action. Is that correct, Mr. Weaver, at this time? Let me tell you, this is no small accomplishment when you look at the many and varied activities of the city. This record also speaks volumes as to the professionalism of all of our employees. Perhaps a little luck as well, as we did come close a couple of times. One of the things that we did get accomplished that I have a very uncomfortable feeling about is our doing away with residential dumpsters. I personally think that this was a mistake, but once again, it was the recommendation of the staff and the will of the council. We shall see. Some of the things that we did not get accomplished and that I am very disappointed with are getting the beer tax increased. Alcohol is a serious problem that our city, county, and state faces. And those problems are not going away. To not develop that revenue stream, given the need in this area, does not make any sense. And the cost of this problem is now being carried by all of the citizens of Wyoming. The current tax of two cents a gallon established in nineteen thirty-five is the lowest in the nation. The ridiculous tax on a case of beer is four and a half cents. I'm sad to say our legislators are being totally irresponsible to our citizens in this area, in my opinion. Given the fact that the city spends approximately five hundred thousand each year on electricity, we are foolish in not developing a solar power array on the land we have available and the opportunity for grants to help with funding. Another thing, I tried very hard to get the seventy thousand dollar work of art that is our entrance signage west of town moved closer to C W C so that it could be more visible and enjoyed by all. That, however, was not the will of the council. Perhaps we can get it moved in the future. I am very hopeful that the lot on Main Street, four twenty-two East Main, can be made into a green space with public restrooms for the benefit of our citizens and traveling with public restrooms for the benefit of our citizens and traveling public. To make into a green space is the current vote of the council. Another issue was the planned water feature in the city park was to be the commemorative centerpiece of Riverton's 100-year celebration in 2006. The river pattern on the Main Street sidewalk were designed to be flowing out of that water feature. Without the water feature, these patterns in our sidewalks do not have any context. I am still hopeful that this beautiful feature can become a reality when North Federal is rebuilt. Regarding the EPA ruling and our relationship with the tribes, this has been a mixed bag. This has added stress to our relationship, but has also forced us to take a closer look at our neighbors and their concerns and goals. I personally did not enjoy being called a low-ramp weasel, but it could have been worse. I know that I have learned a lot since that ruling, and while I do not agree with it, my understanding and appreciation of the argument have deepened. I have come to the considered conclusion, and it is my opinion alone, that the Northern Rapaheh and the Eastern Shoshone will never have the opportunity and prosperity that their tribal members deserve so long as they choose to be dependent on the federal government. Changing this relationship, however, cannot come from outside the tribes, but only by their coming to the realization that the federal government will never be able to live up to their expectations placed in a 150-year-old treaty. Waiting in anticipation for this ship to come in is very destructive to their morale and self-confidence of a great and proud people. It will be interesting to see what the future holds for them and us. Through all these changes and losses, we have moved ahead with a positive attitude, and I am happy to say a balanced budget. The city of Riverton has a wonderful complement of employees as well as modern and up-to-date equipment, and while we do have a balanced budget, we have weakened reserves due to the Riverview Road and South Federal cost overruns. We have many challenges looming in the future with the rebuild of the main airport runway next year and the reconstruction of North Federal a little later. These and other projects are going to take all of the management skills that we can muster to make it through. I am confident, however, that with the leadership of Mayor Baker, the support of the community, and his new council, we are in good hands to deal with these challenges and their continued growth through Riverton. It has been a great honor for Helen and I to represent the city of Riverton these last four years. Thank you. As I told you, it was a little longer than what I intended, but as I got to writing it, there was just so many things that flooded back over these last four years, so thank you. Okay, at this time, we will continue on with the transfer of authority for the city of Riverton. These last four years have been a wonderful experience.
This opportunity to give a presentation for Ron. Sorry. I get the motion is the best of me. Before giving this, I would like to give a few remarks. Ron has dedicated a lot of years to the service of Riverton, both on the council for four years and as the mayor's four years. He also served four years on the chamber board and as chamber president. I've had the privilege of working with him for the past three and a half years. Ron has taken his job very seriously. He's always available to staff and the public. Rarely missed a council meeting. Some of the highlights that I had, and many of them, he has already brought up. He's worked really hard to establish a relationship with the tribes. We've had a lot of meetings, and, and they've been good meetings. He's worked over the years to try to get this beer tax passed, and it's, it's a tough road, but every year it's gotten a little bit better. The 1% optional sales tax was one he spent time, countless hours, and a lot of presentations given to service groups and, and the public, because he saw the importance of improving our infrastructure here in Riverton. He got the council meetings televised, which to most people may think that's not a big deal, but I'm amazed at how many times I go in the grocery store and run into people and they say, oh, I've seen you on TV, and I think a lot of people watch council meetings on TV, and so I think it's a great way to get the word out of what's going on in Riverton. I assisted in getting the Job Corps here. That's been a long process. He's wrote a number of letters, phoned congressmen of the importance of it, attended a lot of meetings, and even went back to DC and met legislators. Getting the Honor Farm property out of public hand in the private sector, that's just on the verge, but he's helped in that and been instrumental. Ron is a great writer, and you probably know that. He's sent a lot of letters, not only to the newspapers, but to citizens and groups, oftentimes explaining or giving clarification to issues that we face here in Riverton. He's been a balloon sponsor for the Rendezvous Days, some of the beautification projects that he's worked on is the Christmas lights on Main Street, the painting of the light poles on, on Main to green, getting lights on the entrance signs, they didn't have that before, decorative lights on South Federal, and then his conceptual drawing of what 422 should be, his vision of having that as a park. He's always wanted to make sure everyone, everything is done in open and transparent and encouraged citizens to come to council meetings and, and participate and express their concerns to the council. I'd also like to thank him for being a friend. When I first arrived in Riverton, I was out without my family. Ron and his wife always tried to make me feel at home. He taught me about auctions and even came over to my house and helped me on a few home improvement projects. So I have a couple of tokens of appreciation for you, Ron. Watch. And here is a key to the city. We also have a picture of him up on the wall. We'll eventually get his years of service below that, and so I'd just like to thank you for your service, Ron. What?
Last year, round and round. I was... Has been a long, Mike Bailey has been a longtime member in our community and is well-known, and we appreciate your running and your election to Ward Two, I believe, Three, Ward Three, and your Ward Two. There we go. A little bit anxious here. And we have some black marks on the carpet here, so if you would move down, Councilman Larson. Want to be able to get pictures here, but these will be the new councilman for the coming year. Councilman Canaan will continue on. Councilman Fabian will continue on, and he's getting an extra dose of being sworn in, is my understanding. Doesn't, doesn't really need it, but to save a lot of questions, leave him up there and not be sworn in, people would wonder what the heck was going on, probably, but, and then Councilman Bailey and Mayor-elect Baker. Lee Martinez was in high school with Lee and been a longtime friend. Congratulations, Lee. Councilman Larson, so if Judge McKee would come up and swear in these gentlemen.
A, and, Constitution of the State of Wyoming. I have not knowingly violated any law. My election or appointment caused it to be done by others. I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Find any hundred-dollar bills in the desk, they're mine. Oh, we'll see how this works. Thank you. Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, very happy to do so. Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Present.
Mayor John L. Lars Baker.
I'm present, thank you. The chair, I would, I declare that a quorum is present, and I would entertain a motion for approval of a balance of the agenda.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the balance of the meeting. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Well, congratulations to the new councilman and the new mayor. I hate to be my first meeting at the new city council.
Could, could you tell us your name and...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm Ginny Carlson Warren, Virginia Warren. I am in the proprietors of Miss Ginny's Roost, Federal Boulevard, just down the street.
Thank you.
I, I come to you tonight with hat in hand. I made a big error. I hope you all got the email that I sent to councilman, I mean, to city administrator, Mr. Weaver. He's kind of guided me through this. On New Year's Eve Day, I went to apply for a catering permit for the Cattlemen's Dinner, which is a huge event, the Cattlemen being such an important part of our, our state and our county. I've been trying to get this catering job for seven years, and they finally gave it to me. So when I got there, I was, I said, oh, could I get a catering permit? And they said, oh, no, it's too late. This was December 31st, a year ago, last year. So I said, really? And they said, yes, the packets have gone out. I, I pride myself on going by the rules, running a clean shop, trying to abide by all the rules and regulations, and being kind of new to town, I guess I didn't quite know how the catering permits materialize. Anyway, I missed my opportunity. I've since filled out the permit, brought the hundred dollars, and I'm throwing myself on your mercy to perhaps get that permit just this once, and I promise Girl Scout's honor that I'll never screw up again.
Thank, thank you. That's the, the next item of... That's the, the next item on business on the agenda is to consider some catering permits and...
See, but I didn't get on the list.
We'll see how that, we'll see how that goes, all right?
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I haven't spoken like this since I was in college, so I'm a wreck.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? The next item on the business is consideration of catering permits. Could we have a report from the Director of Administrative Services, please?
Yes, Your Honor. The City Clerk's Office received the following catering permit applications. Catering permit application was received from La Pire for January 24th, 2015, Wild Turkey Foundation Annual Banquet at Fremont Center from 5:00 PM to 12:00 AM. La Pire, January 24th, 2015, Fremont County Fire Protection District Annual Banquet at St. Margaret's Gym, 5:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Bar Ten, January 24th, 2015, Retirement Party for Employee with Inner Mountain Electric at Reach Foundation from 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM. And La Pire, February 7th, 2015, for the Wild West Winter Carnival Crab Crack at St. Margaret's Gym, 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And, Your Honor, the City Clerk's Office did receive an application from Miss Virginia Carlson at 3:56 PM this afternoon with a hundred-dollar fee paid.
Thank you. Uh, the Chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve all the catering permits.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, I, I am basically a strong advocate of rules and regulations. But here comes the but. Sometimes we have to see our way through when emergencies arise. And Miss Ginny is a new resident to Riverton, and I personally think that she should deserve a shot and get this catering permit. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Councilman Fabian?
Yes, is, um, is, can, can the permit be issued? I mean, is it, is it something that can be done in time or not? Or we, it could be done if, if it were voted that way? I guess I kind of echo comments then. I mean, I don't like to make exceptions because everybody wants one, once you do. In this case, a new resident who hasn't held that liquor license very long, I would be willing to, I guess, bend the rules. Thank you.
What, what's, I would entertain a motion to that effect.
Um, I guess I would amend the motion to include the catering permit for Ginny's Roost.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, is there any further discussion on the amendment?
Sir, I'd like to ask a question as to when she found out that she needed this permit? I mean, did she just find out after the packages went out? Or when did that occur and when is the Cattlemen's event?
Ask that again, please.
Ma'am, when did you find out that you were gonna be cater, that you had gotten the catering for the, for the Cattlemen's?
I found out about the third week of December. I mean, it was a relatively short notice. I mean, we talked about it and I bid on it, but they didn't get back to me until just before Christmas, actually. So, I, I mean, I really, I haven't even gotten back the signed contracts from them yet.
And when is the event?
It's their annual dinner and awards banquet at the Armory for 225 people.
When, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry, this Saturday evening.
Thank you.
Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor of the amendment to the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're back on the original motion now. Is there any discussion on the catering permits? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. The next item on the agenda is the leadership ballot for City Council President and Vice President. City Administrators, report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. At the beginning of each year, we vote in the Council President and Vice President. The Council President presides when the mayor is not present or at the meetings or out of town. And then the Vice President would reside if both the Council President and the mayor are not available. Each member of the council will be given a ballot that looks like this. We'll hand these out in a second. The mayor does not vote on this. We found this out later, that the mayor does not vote on this since this is a vote for council leadership. And so, everyone will be given a ballot except the mayor. And we'll vote for the Council President first. And you just check one box, I mean, one name for each of you. And the police chief and I will go in the back, we'll tally it up and come and give you the results of who will be the Council President. We'll do the same thing for the Vice President. And then typically, the way it seats up on the dais is the Council President sits to the right and the Vice President sits directly to the left of the mayor. So, start. Your Honor, we have a tie. So, the tie is between Lee Martinez and Jonathan Fabian. So, we need to revote and then you vote for one of those two. Kyle has some good jokes. Were you anticipating a tie?
You know, I guess that's not anything we planned on, is it? I mean, there's five people voting. You'd think that that would work out, but you could see how it goes. Well, there's not five people. Mayor?
The mayor doesn't get a vote.
Didn't vote. You didn't vote? Okay. Gee, math was... I don't know if everybody can see that. I have my own. I didn't realize I was gonna get my own gavel. Eric said that City of Riverton, January the 6th, 2015. That's, that's pretty nice. I thought Ron was gonna pass the other one to me. He get to keep, he got to keep his, so that's pretty nice.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Stephen, who, who is currently, has their name in in the Ward Two right now?
Um, Sarah Kalback.
Or Don Lee.
Holly. Gibbon.
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 Holly Gibbon.
Mary Ellen Christensen.
And Richard Bennett.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you suppose there's anything wrong with going ahead with some other agenda items?
No, I mean, we...
Let's, let's do that. Let's, let's, while we get some more ballots printed, let's go ahead. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of, of representatives to the School District 25 Recreation Board. It's important that we make that appointment this evening because they have a board meeting coming up tomorrow or the next?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
And the 19th also.
And, and on the 19th. And, and those are big meetings from the standpoint of dispensing funds. And so, we need to, we need to get that settled. I'd like to appoint Councilman Lee Martinez to District 25 Recreation Board. And, and Martin Canaan currently serves on that as well. And Martin, would you continue to serve on that for the next month until we reorganize our committee assignments?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
Your Honor, I would move to approve the two appointments for the District 25 Rec. Board.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. Motion passes. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the appointment of the municipal court judge, alternate court judge, and city attorney. Could we have the city administrators report?
Yes, Your Honor. Pursuant to statutory requirements, the governing body may make appointments annually to the following positions: municipal judge, alternate judge, and city attorney. With the appointment of these positions, staff thought it would be appropriate to identify whether these individuals were contract or employees and their respective salaries and or rate of pay. So, our municipal court judge is Judge Teresa McKee. She's listed as an employee at a salary rate of approximately $3,400 per month. Her compensation includes FICA withholding, workers' compensation and retirement. Erin Vincent is our alternate judge. And we just have a contract with him to be billed at an hourly rate of $100 per hour. In the past four years, we've only used him once, so we don't use him very often. Teresa tries to move her schedule around or the courts around her schedule, so we don't have to do that very often. And then our city attorney, Rick Saulers, will be billed at the hourly rate of $125 per hour for his services. Overall budget impact, it ranges anywhere from $45,000 to $70,000, mainly dealing with the city attorney budget because it's just based on what's going on. And particularly right now with the EPA ruling, there's been, we've had quite a few charges related to that, and so that fluctuates a little bit. We're recommending approval of these three positions.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for the appointment of Teresa McKee as the municipal court judge, Erin Vincent as the alternate court judge, and Rick Saulers as the county attorney.
As the city attorney?
As city attorney, absolutely.
Your Honor, I would move to approve the three appointments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Sir, just a quick question. Mr. Weaver, did, has there ever been a determination as far as what those state funds, whether that was gonna help pay for the city attorney's involvement in the EPA case?
Yes, Your Honor, that's, that's one we're working on. We've gotta get the county commissioners on board because they're the ones that have to apply for the money. And so, at this point, they have not given us the heads-up to say that they are gonna pay for that. They just have to apply for it and they believe that the state has the money in, in the account that we could be reimbursed for that. So, I have no doubt that we will eventually get that. We just have to work with the commissioners.
Anything else? Did we, did we pass that?
No, we need to vote.
We haven't voted yet. Okay. Are all in favor of those appointments?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. So, that passes. Have we got enough ballot, ballots to break this tie? I'm dying to find out who the president of the council is.
This suspense is killing me.
Your Honor, our council president is Jonathan Fabian.
Thank you.
Your Honor, Vice President is Lee Martinez.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 1307, Designated of Official Depositories. Director of Administrative Services, report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. This is a statutory regulation that we have to designate official depositories. The only reason you see three is those are the only three that responded. Well, wait a minute. Another one responded, but they have too many funds on deposit. Wouldn't that be great? So, one of the banks did not want to become a depository for the City of Riverton. So, at this time, I would ask that you pass Resolution Number 13 dash, or 1307 and designate the official depositories for the City of Riverton as the central bank and trust, U.S. Bank and Wells Fargo. And, Your Honor, may I clarify that? First Interstate, statutorily, you have to have a meeting of the Board of Directors and a resolution passed by that board. First Interstate doesn't meet until February. You'll see them on the agenda in February. So, they are official and official depositories as of right now.
They, they are currently?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. I would entertain a motion to designate Central Bank and Trust, U.S. Bank and Wells Fargo Bank as official depositories for the City of Riverton.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the official depositories for Riverton as listed.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. That passes. Resolution 1308, Designation of the Legal Newspaper. Director of Administrative Services, report.
Your Honor, may I have a motion on adopting or approving Resolution Number 1307 for the record, please? I know there was a motion to designate the depositories, but I would need a motion to approve Resolution Number 1307.
I didn't say it right.
Your Honor, I would move to approve Resolution 1307.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Okay, Resolution 1308. Administrative Services.
Yes, Your Honor. This is Resolution Number 1308. Again, statutorily, we have, we are required to designate a newspaper if we have one within our community. As we only have one, the designation would be The Riverton Ranger, and that is Resolution Number 1308.
Thank you. Uh, I'd entertain a motion for Resolution 1308 to designate The Riverton Ranger as the official newspaper.
Your Honor, I make a motion to, we approve Resolution 1308.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. The next item of business is Ordinance Number 15 dash 001, third and final reading. Uh, repealing and revising Riverton Municipal Code, Article 2, Article, or Title 2, Article 3, Rules and Procedure. Would the city clerk please read Ordinance Number 15001 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. This is Ordinance Number 15 dash 001, third and final reading, and ordinance repealing Sections 2.04.090B, 2.04.130, 2.04.150 through 2.04.420, and revising Section 2.04.140 of the Riverton Municipal Code pursuant to rules of procedure in the conduct of public meetings.
The chair would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I would recommend that we approve Ordinance Number 15 dash 001.
Is there- Is a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is, this is something that the council's been working on now for a month, so the new guys, you know what they're talking about and, and, uh, what we're gonna do here, okay?
Your Honor, this is basically what we've been doing even when you were on the council. It's rules, Robert's rules, but we're changing it to more current Robert's rules. That's it.
That's, yeah, that's my understanding, is that what, what we're gonna do is we're just gonna call it Robert's Rules Order instead of having a whole bunch of rules stated in city code.
Correct.
Yep. Okay. No further discussion? Um, we need to have a roll call vote. It's third and final reading.
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilman Mike Bailey.
Yes.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Yes.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Yes.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Yes.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Yes.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
Yes. Uh, the next item of business is Council Members Roundtable. So, Mr. Bailey.
Okay. Um, thank you. I guess it's an honor for me to sit up here before you and to have been elected to this office, so... And I thanks Mr. Weaver for making it acceptable to get emotional at these meetings because I have the same problem. And so, I apologize in advance. Um, again, I... Excuse me. I, I've lived in and around this community pretty much all of my life. Um, raised my family here, have a business here, and so Riverton is near and dear to my heart, so... It is my honor to serve the members of my ward and the City of Riverton, and I wanna make sure that everybody knows that I'm available if anybody has anything that I can help with, and I look forward to working with the city staff. And I, I've been on the Planning Commission for 12-plus years and have worked around the city staff quite a bit, and, and they are a wonderful group of people, and, and I appreciate them, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Councilman Canaan?
Uh, sir, again, just echo some comments that look forward to working with the new council and, uh, continuing on doing, uh, good things for the City of Riverton.
Thank you. Councilman Martinez?
Yeah, I just wanna thank everybody in Ward 2 who voted for me, and, uh, I will do the best I can, and, uh... I know I've been there for eight years before, so I will, I don't have to be retrained, except every day, but that's okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Fabian?
Thank you. Um, I was just sitting here thinking back. This is the beginning of my third year on the council, and in the first two years, it's been interesting because nearly every person that I was seated with was replaced by way of, uh... Of appointment, I guess, up, up until this point, so kind of an interesting turn of events that occurred, but, uh, had a lot of fun with the past council and really think we did some good things to move the city forward, and, and I know that, uh, as we get to work together, and as the new council, we'll, we'll continue on that path and look forward to the process. Thank you.
Councilman Larson?
Uh, Your Honor, uh... Um, we were, I was appointed back in, uh, February, and, uh, I didn't think I had a chance in cold Riverton at making the cut. Um, we ran again for the permanent job, and again, I thank the people who voted for me. I truly feel that serving is an honor.
Thank you. Uh, city administrators' report?
Yes, Your Honor. Look forward to working with all of you. I'm excited for this new mayor and council. I think it's gonna be a great couple of years. Um... One of the things that we need to do is, uh, we've got the WHAM Winter Workshop coming up at the end of the month, and right now, we've got, uh, the mayor and Councilman Martinez and Councilman Bailey signed up to go to that. Um, in that, there's a business meeting where they vote on particular issues, and so we need to designate someone to be our voter, which typically is the mayor, and then, uh, we need an alternate. And so, I guess my recommendation would be that Mayor Baker be appointed to that, and then you choose amongst the, the other two going to be the alternate.
You need a motion, or?
Yeah.
Your Honor, I would move that Mayor Baker be our voting member, and Lee Martinez be our backup voting member, I guess.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. Uh, next week, we're gonna have a work session. We're gonna be talking about the airport. That's gonna be an interesting discussion. Uh, we'll be talking about both operations and about what the task force has been doing, and, um... To get everyone on, up to speed and the new council members, so that is what we hope to do at the end of the month, is adopt a resolution in support of this formation of a group so that we can start raising money for a revenue guarantee. So, um, we wanna make sure that everyone's on board with that before we move forward. And then, lastly, I'd just like to have Kyle report a little bit about our sanitation efforts since we're rolling out the rollouts, and staff has spent considerable time today doing a lot of stuffing of envelopes to try to, um, help the residents understand this transition.
Your Honor? Your Honor? Real, real quick, can, do you know the status of the, um... The, they were asking for names of business people to serve on that group. Do you know if they've gathered enough or are still looking?
Your Honor, I think we had the one, and her name was last name Klein from The Riverton Ranger. Was that it?
Yes.
Yeah, that was the only one that we've, that was-
Still seeking more names if possible? Okay, thank you. Your Honor, as Mr. Weaver mentioned, uh, January brings a new year and also a busy month for sanitation services. Um, we know this has been coming for a while, and we actually say thank you to Fremont County for giving us an extra month to, uh, implement this change. Originally, we were supposed to have, um, our compliance date by the end of the year, which would have been, I think, a tough transition for some of our residents to, uh, go through the holidays and worry about whether they would have an alley dumpster, whether they would have a rollout. So we were granted another month, um, to roll out the rollouts. As such, we are gonna be working hard this month, um, and, uh, bringing about this transition. We understand that this is gonna be a difficult change for a majority of our residents, and we wanna do what we can to keep them informed, to also respond to their questions. Um, as Mr. Weaver mentioned, we will be sending mailers out to every resident that is, uh... That uses our sanitation services to explain to them the changes that are coming. Most importantly, um, outside of removing the dumpsters and receiving rollouts, um, our service schedule's going to change. Again, the impetus for all this change is Fremont County reducing their days of operation. As such, we can no longer collect trash and deposit it at the baler on Mondays. So we lose a day, um, and we had to find a way to collect the same amount of trash, but in a shortened amount of time. Therefore, um, anyone who, who previously had a Monday collection day will no longer receive collection that day. As such, we have modified all of our, uh, service schedules. Wanna make sure our residents are aware of that. Therefore, we're sending a letter to everyone. County 10 was kind enough to put a notice, um, on their website today, along with a map showing where the boundaries will be for these new, uh, service areas. Um, Public Works will obviously entertain phone calls whenever we have questions in our residence. As far as transitioning away from alley dumpsters to rollouts, um, we're gonna begin that process Monday, January 12th, continue through the end of the month. Again, our compliance date with the county is going to be the first week of February, February 3rd. Therefore, starting next week, we're gonna have our crews working through the city, collecting the dumpsters and delivering rollouts. A few details that will be, um, explained in the letters that our residents will be receiving, and then also on notices that will be put with the rollouts as they are being delivered is. Um, and I, I hope that will answer some of the questions that our residents have. The first of which is, where do I put my rollout, my weekly pickup? And the easiest answer to that that we found was we are gonna be delivering the rollouts to the properties where we will be planning on picking them up. If that makes sense, basically, where we deliver the rollout is where our residents will need to put it each week, so they can expect their collection. Um, again, the days may change for, um, all of our residents. We tried to keep it as similar, or as as similar to the existing routes as possible. We did have to change things, and it also gave us an opportunity to streamline our process a little bit. We had situations where trucks were crossing paths throughout the day, and wasn't the best option, so we've streamlined our schedules. Uh, we hope to serve our residents better. We know this is a, a big change. It may be a difficult change, and we wanna make sure if any questions arise, we're available for that. So a few things to be aware of. Um, again, the big date of the change will be next Monday, and it will continue through the end of the month as we work through the entire city. Um, I guess a, a point of clarification to end is once, and this is an important point, so I'm glad I'm bringing it up. You'll have to forgive me. Once the dumpster is removed from the alley and the rollouts are delivered, the schedules will remain intact as they currently are through the rest of the month. So, basically what I'm saying is, if you have your dumpster removed Monday, the 12th, don't plan on having your schedule changed until February. Um, the reason being is we, we cannot accommodate implementing a new schedule while the rest of, you know, the city is still operating on the old schedule. It's just logistically too challenging. So, for the rest of the month of January, everyone's pickup day will remain the same, whether they are using a new rollout or the existing alley dumpster. And come the first week of February, all service routes and schedules will be adapted and changed to the new route, which would, or new schedule, excuse me, which would be Tuesday through Friday.
Thank you. Councilman Larson?
Um, question on that, um, I have two commercial properties. Um... Will they, just the residential dumpsters be removed? And the commercial ones left? Or will they all have rollouts? I have, I have a commercial property on Second Street right behind, uh... And one on 9, 909 Mary Ann. There are lots of bins there that, and there's only my, my building on that East-West drive, but there's all kinds of dumpsters.
Your Honor, Councilman. Uh, as far as business garbage collection, um, no changes will be made except for the schedule of pickup. Um, and we will be sending letters and notices to businesses as well later in the month. We wanna focus first on our residents because that's gonna be the biggest change. Um, apartment complexes, businesses will keep their dumpsters as they currently have them. Um, it's only the residential accounts that will be switched to rollouts.
Thank you. Your Honor? Thank you.
I have a question. Uh, on the, on the pickups with the rollouts, are they gonna be in the alley or on the streets?
Your Honor, Councilman. For the mo, for the most part, if you had alley pickup in the past, you will continue with alley service. Um, we have highlighted, and we have a map actually in the, the Gallery of City Hall, and it has been posted on the city's website as well, where a few isolated neighborhoods throughout the city will have curbside pickup. Um, and that's due to, uh, utility conflicts, tight corners, issues like that, we just needed to clean up. Um, with dumpsters, we were able to at least locate them where overhanging power lines, et cetera, were, were out of the way, but now that the rollouts are gonna be there. Found that some areas were just not conducive for, for pickup. So the, the quick answer is, for the majority of the city who had typical alley pickup for their dumpsters, we'll continue that way. There's just a small percentage that will not, and we've done our best to contact those individuals.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Uh, mayor's comments. Uh, I'm thankful for the opportunity that I have to serve the City of Riverton. Uh, I'll work really hard to do the best job I can possibly do. And feel free to contact me if you've got troubles that you think that I can do anything about, and I'll be glad to, uh, I'll be glad to assist in any way that I can. I look forward to working with the city staff, uh, on a more intimate basis. Um, I'm grateful for their service that they provide to the City of Riverton, and, um, I've enjoyed the time that I spent on council and got to know many city employees, and and I'm grateful for the effort that, uh, city, city staff puts forward on our behalf each day. Uh, one thought comes to my mind is that, um, uh, both, uh, Councilman Martinez and Councilman, uh... Bailey were on the Planning Commission, and, uh, that means we have vacancies on planning. We have vacancy on the Airport Board. So we have, we have a number of committees that are important to the function of the City of Riverton that need uh, support from the community, and so I urge you, as you see those announcements, to come by to, uh, get your name in the, in the hat, and, um, uh, try to, uh, try to provide some service to the City of Riverton. Uh, we don't have an executive session tonight. I think our business is concluded. And look at there, it's not even 8:30. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.